Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. We've got a full house. It's always great to see a big crowd here. Well, most of the time. It's nice to see a big crowd here. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on May 13th, 2025, and ask the Assistant City Clerk to please call Rose.
Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Present.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Bragan?
Present. I would ask Commissioner Henderson to say the invocation, and then we'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our God and our Father, we are again grateful for this day and for this time. Grateful, God, for every opportunity that you give us to come into your presence. We're thankful, Lord God, for this meeting and for the exciting things that are happening today and the exciting things that are happening even in our city. We pray, oh God, a special covering, a special blessing upon our mayor and in those of us who govern with him. We pray, God, that we will feel your presence and that we will know that we are doing a great work. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, none this evening.
Thank you. Okay, the first thing that we have on the agenda is we have a couple of proclamations, and we have excellent representation from our police force. It's great to have you all here. Claudia just told me this is the safest commission meeting we've had in a good while, so it's great to have you here. We have a couple of proclamations, one for National Police Week and one for National Maritime Day, so we'll start with the Police Week. So whereas National Police Week is observed annually in the United States to honor the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers who protect our communities with courage, integrity, and commitment, whereas Peace Officers Memorial Day is observed during National Police Week to pay special tribute to those brave officers who have lost their lives or become disabled in the line of duty, and whereas law enforcement officers across our nation serve with valor and distinction, often placing themselves in harm's way to ensure the safety and security of all citizens, and whereas the risks faced daily by police officers are great, and their commitment to uphold the law and protect the public deserves our respect, support, and heartfelt gratitude, and whereas it is important that we recognize the ongoing contributions of our local, state, and federal law enforcement officers and remember those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their communities. Now therefore, I, George P. Bray, Mayor of the City of Paducah, proclaim the week of May 11th to May 17th as National Police Week and further proclaim May 15th as Police Officers' Memorial Day in the City of Paducah, and I encourage all citizens to extend appreciation to our police department for their service and exemplary dedication to our community. Okay, I'm gonna present this to Brian?
Everybody.
Everybody. Let's all come up for a photo op.
Don't bring the dog.
It would be, wouldn't it?
Like I said, I feel very, very safe.
I wonder what the different patches are.
Canaan, he should have brought his dog.
Yeah.
Canaan, he should have brought the dog.
I don't know.
I love the dog.
The second proclamation is for National Maritime Day, and everybody here should be well aware that we are a river town, and the river industry for us is extremely important, and so it's always good to be able to recognize the maritime industry. So this proclamation reads as, whereas the maritime industry has been essentially, has been an essential cornerstone of our nation's prosperity, connecting us to the world through trade, exploration, and defense, and whereas National Maritime Day, observed on May 22nd each year, commemorates the first trans-oceanic voyage by a U.S.-flagged steamship, the Savannah, which set sail in 1819, marking a defining moment in American maritime history, and whereas today we honor the generations of merchant mariners, shipbuilders, port workers, and seafarers who have served our country with courage, skill, and resilience in times of both peace and conflict, and whereas the U.S. Merchant Marine has played a vital role in securing the freedom and prosperity of our nation, especially during wartime, when they have transported troops and critical supplies under great risk, and whereas we reaffirm our commitment to supporting a strong and vibrant maritime industry, including investments in maritime infrastructure, workforce development, and the promotion of U.S.-flagged vessels. Now therefore, I, George P. Bray, Mayor of the City of Paducah, do hereby proclaim May 22nd, 2025, as National Maritime Day in the City of Paducah, and encourage all our citizens to recognize the enduring contributions of the maritime community to our nation's economy, security, and heritage.
All right. It seems like we were just here doing this.
It does.
Well, this year was the 61st Annual Dogwood Trail Award, if you guys can hear me or not, and we had some big shoes to fill after the 60th Dogwood Trail because it was such a beautiful season last year. Mother Nature did not cooperate this year, so we're not real happy with her, but despite all the rain that we had, the flooding, the postponing of our ceremony, we still managed to pull it off, and we still had some beautiful blooms throughout the city. So thank you to everyone who lit up your trees, our award winners that are here tonight, and just anyone in general who has a dogwood and takes pride in celebrating the Dogwood Trail of Paducah. It's a very special event for the Civic Beautification Board and for our city, and we really appreciate everything you do to help make that happen and to make the city beautiful that time of the year. So with no further ado, we'll jump into the awards. So our first award is our large award, the Dolly McNutt Award, and I will say this tree was a hello Dolly tree this year. She was located at 1919 Jefferson, and Lisa Massey lives there. Lisa, if you could come up and get your award, there's a certificate, a check, and then a little bag for you, and if you don't mind to stand up here, and we'll do a group picture at the end, or you want to do individual, Karen? We could do individual if you want with Kathy. Okay, that's fine. Remind you to do individual. Sorry. Goes to 304 Circle, and it was also a big award winner. It was the Baby Dogwood Awards. Most of you know Monica Fowler. She served on the Civic Beautification Board for almost 10 years until recently, and her husband Fred, they take great pride in taking care of their beautiful dogwood trees, and she had some gorgeous baby dogwoods this year. Next, we have our on-trail winners, and the first one was at 230 North 38th Street. Ms. Andrea Higdon had a beautiful tree aligned with some beautiful tulips and flowers, and her yard just looked great this season, so thank you, Andrea. Next, we have 203 Cedar Avenue. It's Nick and Amanda Hutchinson's home, and it was absolutely gorgeous this year, lit up, and the trees were beautiful, and the tulips in their yard, and all the flowers Next, we have Mr. John Graveland at 410 North 5th Street. We added the lower-town area back into the trail this year, and he had a gorgeous tree And next, we have Karen and Rick Aaron's. They were also in the lower-town area and just had three or four beautiful dogwood trails that aligned their home, and they were absolutely gorgeous this year. Their address is 503 North 7th Street. I think they were gonna be out of town. And next on our list at 3644 Drury Lane, Ms. Tara Wise-Salville. Tara had a gorgeous little dogwood in her front yard, but if you peeped around the corner, you saw three more that lined the back and side of her home. Next, we have Tommy and Ashley Jones. They live at 1753 Jefferson Street. They had a gorgeous tree this year, too. Jefferson Street had a lot of award winners. Next, we have 2502 Jefferson. The homeowner is Julia Jaeger. It's a beautiful English Tudor home on Jefferson, and I don't think she's here tonight. But it was gorgeous this year. It's always a gorgeous home. And then we have two off-trail winners, the first one being at 2823 Washington, which was Tony Hanson. He had a beautiful tree and said she had a lot of support from neighbors helping her And our last winner of the evening is Brandy Groves. She is 3437 Forest Circle. It's Brandy Carboni. I said that wrong. And Avery's gonna help accept the award, too. And that concludes our award winners for this year, and again, thank you all for taking pride in your dogwood trees and helping to light up Paducah.
Stacy, thank you for your leadership and your entire committee, and it's really, the dogwoods are really what sets Paducah apart in the spring, and I know it's so important and recognizing it does such a great job for the city. Thank you very much. Okay, we've got three people tonight that want to make public comments, and so I'm gonna call everybody up one at a time, but I just remind those... Let everybody get situated. I just remind those who are making public comments that, first of all, you have three minutes, and I just, we just ask that you be respectful. We want to hear from everybody, want to, you know, we made a change a couple of years ago, really, to allow people to speak really about any subject, and it didn't have to be on the agenda, but the only thing we ask, you know, is that, is that everybody be respectful and not only the way you make comments, but the time. So I'll start out with Clay Norton.
Clay Norton, 1271 Wedgeboro Road, Mayfield. I'm a manager for Stormway House Gallery and McCann Museum here in Paducah. And my question is, why was the floodgate not open for the riverboat Thursday of Quilt They came in, they couldn't get through the floodgates, so they went to Grand Rivers. We've lost enough, you know, boats or visits to Grand Rivers already. That was a lot of revenue and exposure for Paducah that was lost.
So you just came...
I'm asking a question...
You just came to come in.
I'm needing an explanation of why that was, because...
We, so I'll answer it this way. We put the safety of our citizens at the very top of what we do, and so the floodgates, you know, we had, you know, the city had a lot of, a lot of pressure from different people. We had conferences over at the convention center. We had the, we had the quilt show that happened right after, and so the decisions we made really are all about safety, and so that comes before everything else, and so everything takes, you know, takes a second. And I think that, you know, in talking to our citizens, while everybody, you know, it's easy to get upset, you know, about the floodgates being not up here and there, but, but we relied on, on safety protocol first, and, you know, we had a big rain event, and that's, that's our explanation.
It was a huge disappointment. The passengers that we did have bussed back here were very disappointed that they weren't there being Quilt Week.
Mayor, I would also add that the river level was so high that they could not moor there anyway. The cables that they moored to were covered with water, and we contacted, we contacted them in advance, and they were made aware of that.
Well, they were still too high on, two of them way high up on the Kentucky side.
Yeah, but they weren't...
I asked their cruise director, and they said it was specifically because the gates were closed.
Clay, thank you for your comments. Bonnie Koblitz, did I say that correctly? Did I? Please, come forward.
Thank you all very much for giving me the opportunity and the time to speak to you this evening. I'm speaking today about City Ordinance, Chapter 98, Article 6. The citizens of this country are guaranteed the right to assemble and petition the government in the First Amendment to the United States Constitution. You all know this. The above-city ordinance, in my opinion, restricts and impedes this right. The requirement of having no more than 25 people assembling at a protest, rally, or demonstration interferes with my First Amendment right to assemble. The requirement to purchase a liability insurance policy of $1 million, which costs a minimum of $250, interferes with my First Amendment right. Now, you may not think the city is hindering the execution of the right of freedom to assemble and petition the government, but I'm here to say that putting a restriction of 25 people and demanding an insurance policy that costs $250 definitely does interfere with my First Amendment right and of other people also. If you think that there are no more than 25 people in the city and surrounding area who might object to things the government is doing, you are out of touch. And if you think that anyone can just come up with $250 every time they want to demonstrate or rally, you are out of touch. I don't know if this is true, but I suspect that the restrictions in this ordinance were designed to, at the very least, operate as a chilling effect on the citizen's right to assemble, or basically take away our First Amendment right and control the flow of information. As you well know, there are many actions taken by our government and our representatives that are very concerning and frightening to regular citizens. If there's no way to redress these actions, if this city wants to silence its citizens, then that makes me even more afraid and angry. I urge you to reconsider the requirements put forth in this ordinance and stop trying to hamper the expression of grievances that citizens might have. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
I just made it.
Where do you live?
I don't live within the city limits of Paducah, but I come into town almost every day and spend money here. I donate to organizations here, and I volunteer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Koblitz. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience and your time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And the final is a nice gentleman I met right before the meeting, Mr. Joyce. I set the stage for you. I said you were nice, Mr. Joyce, so...
I will be. I promise. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm William Joyce. I own property at 865 Lyden Road. That is our big farm. My daughter, son-in-law, and four grandsons live at the house there. Reason why I'm here, the city controls the floodgates, and I understand the county controls EM, things like that. I understand it a lot more than you realize I do. I've been a volunteer fireman for 44 years. I worked eight years as an industrial firefighter, and I also teach for state fire rescue training for the Commonwealth of Kentucky. I travel all over the state doing programs, so I understand how all that works. But since the city controls the closing of the floodgates, I'm here to ask if the city and the county can get together when the floodgates are closed. If, take 911 and start a robo-call, starting at Oaks Road in Baggett Lane, all the sideroads all the way to Bonds Road, down Bonds Road, start at Gib Road at, on Husbands, to the railroad tracks, to the flood wall, and call all the residents in that area and tell them the floodgates are being closed. Usually, when the floodgates are closed at Husbands, we have three days to get out. In 12 hours, 10 to 12 hours, we had water coming in our house on Lyden. We moved from 8 o'clock till 1:30 in the morning. When we left that morning at 1:30, we was pushing water with a 3,500 ram pickup truck. When we closed the doors, it was coming in the floor of the truck. When we went back at 1:30 that afternoon, we went back in a boat, and there was six foot of water in our house. I lost my shop. I lost my farm animals. I lost a $30,000 tractor trying to go get my farm animals out, and it all boils down to there needs to be some way for that closure to be communicated to the people in that area. And my other thing, if the city and the county can get together, get the lowest house on Oaks Road, which is gonna be a house on Baggett Lane, if I can judge my elevation, transpose that number to the storm drain that comes under I-24 at the I-24 lake, just as you get on at exit 11, and let's see that elevation and see the footage from the ground onto that storm drain. There is 600 acres of open woods right there. If we could put a weir gate right there, that would help us with some of the water that's coming back off of Obitten Road area.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Appreciate you being here. I spoke with Mr. Joyce before the meeting, and we talked a little bit about, we've had a couple of meetings with the county since the event, and I think that we all have agreed that some form of better communication. This particular event was very unique because of the amount of rain that we got, and...
I agree.
So it, it didn't act like earlier events, and, but, but regardless, I think the partnership between the city and the county with, they have responsibility for emergency management, but we have responsibility for the gate control, and so I think we can, we can make some changes in the communication plan, and I really appreciate you being here and communicating your personal circumstances to us.
And I will go to the county.
I asked Mr. Joyce before, I said, "Have you been to the county yet?", and he said, "No, I started here because you guys control the gates", and I said, "But, but they are responsible, they're the leader as it relates to emergency management", so I think it's a, it's a partnership here that we have to...
I agree.
So, so I really do appreciate you being here.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate being able to speak to you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Okay, we will move on, excuse me, we will move on with the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be... in which event the item will be removed from consent agenda and considered separately. The city clerk will read the items recommended for approval unless a commissioner has an item they would like pulled off. Hearing none.
I'd like to just, I have a couple of questions about the Vestas Uniform Service.
One of them.
Well, yeah, if you, you're asking for that to be removed to talk in.
Well, I guess it has to be for me to ask my question, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
So which item is that?
That's item I.
Yeah. Okay. We'll remove item I, take that first right after the consent agenda. Anything else? Is that the only one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. City clerk?
Approved minutes for the April 21, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting, receiving filed documents, personnel actions, reappointment of J.P. Kelly, and joint reappointment of Charles Leon Owen to the Paducah-McCracken County Industrial Development Authority, IDA. Said term shall expire March 31, 2029. A municipal order authorizing the Finance Director to make payment to AT&amp;T in the amount of $180,000 for a Vestas 911 phone upgrade. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a participating addendum with NASPO value point for cooperative purchasing and authorizing the Finance Director to make payment to the ZABX in the amount of $40,170.18 for the purchase of two dispatch consoles. A municipal order authorizing and directing the city manager to initiate a request for proposals for a non-exclusive cable franchise in the city of Paducah. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an application for a body armor grant through the Kentucky Office of the Attorney General in the amount of $245,322 to purchase multi-curve plates, plaque carriers, shields, and helmets for the Paducah Police Department SWAT program, and ballistic helmets and four SIFT armor vests for patrol officers, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order authorizing the purchase of radios and accessories from Communications International in the total amount of $255,025.98 to be used by the Paducah Fire Department and 911 Communications Center. A municipal order authorizing Siemens Church Institute of New York and New Jersey to enter into a sublease with Reliant Maritime Solutions LLC for a portion of the property located at 129 Water Street. A municipal order authorizing the acceptance of a crumb rubber grant in the amount of $31,600 through the Kentucky Department of Waste Management for a port-and-place rubber surfacing at Kyler Park, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
So moved. Second.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
Okay, we'll take item I.
That'd be a municipal order, the first one. So, Madam Clerk, would you mind to read that?
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Accepting the Bid of Vestas Services LLC for Uniform Services for Use by the Public Works Department, Engineering Department, and Parks Department," and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same.
So moved. Second. So my question on this was, I just noticed that in the detail it said that we'd only received one bid on that, and I just, and you may not be the right person, I don't know if Chris is here, but it seemed like, that's, it seems to be a very, I thought uniform services was a very competitive field, so I was just a little surprised that we just had one, and, and.
Yeah, I mean, to, to why other companies did not, you know, bid on it, or, you know, have not, that was the, the lone bid that was received. It was responsive to, to that, and so that's why the recommendation came forward.
Understood.
But, but to, to reason why we didn't have others, I, no, I, I can't answer that tonight, but we will get, we will do some research and get back with you on that.
Okay, right, thank you.
So I, I think you make, you make a good point. I mean, when it comes to putting out RFPs, I mean, competition makes the world go around, and so if you put out, we don't get, you know, competitive bids from multiple people, then it doesn't feel like you're competing. Now, we don't know the reason that we only got one bid, but I think whenever, you know, a couple of times when we've released RFPs, one of the things that we've done, a couple of times, and not every time, because I'm not involved in everyone, but I've said, you know, "Let's make sure that we know who is a potential bidder, so that they're aware of that," you know? And so I think that's a best practice for anything that we're, that we're trying to get bids on, you know? So, but I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, so. I'll ask the city clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
Okay, we've got two municipal orders to vote on tonight. The first one, I'll ask the city clerk to please read.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Authorizing the City to Release the Guidelines and Application for the Paul Bruin Grant Sub-Awards."
So moved.
Second.
This is, this Paul Bruin grant is, I, I think it's exciting. It's an exciting opportunity, and I'll let Hope tell us about it.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and City Clerk. If you all recall, will recall, just a few weeks ago, I was up here and went over the Paul Bruin guidelines and application and what all was going to be included on that. Just to refresh a little bit, this is a $750,000 grant we received through the National Park Service with the goal of improving economic development through the revitalization of historical properties. In order to be eligible for this grant, a building must either be listed on the National Historic Register, they need, or they could be eligible for the Historic Register, or they could be a contributing property in a historical district. For purposes of this grant, we have designated the Paducah Downtown Historical District, the Market House Historical District, and then eligible properties on the South Side. So since we were last here, we have had some new developments and some things to add, and so with that, I'm going to turn that over to Palmer to give you all an update on what's happened since that last presentation.
Thank you, Hope. It's all good news, so. Good way to start. So our primary responsibility after our last meeting here was to simply have our guidelines and materials, our application approved by the National Park Service. This is a requirement for all recipients of this grant. So after our last meeting, we forwarded all of our materials to our contacts at the NPS and started that kind of review process. And we passed. That's the good news. So we now have their authority from the National Park Service to open our Paul Bruin, Paul Bruin Grant. They went through our application, all of our guidelines, they checked off on it. So from that, our next step is to essentially open our Paul Bruin sub-grant program. So from that, we want to stay on track for our May opening deadline. So from that, we're recommending opening Monday, May 19th. That's next week. That's our opening date for this program. The closing date of this application window would be July 3rd. That's a Thursday right before the holiday. So that is a 45-day application window that we're going to have. Within these 45 days, there's going to be two public workshops that we're going to have available for interested applicants. These aren't mandatory to attend, but they're highly recommended since this is a very high-level grant. But we'll be going over the actual application process and all of the requirements of the program. Furthermore, that application, we've been working to get that posted online through the online services portal of the city, so everybody's going to be able to go to the city website and see that page, and then apply through that permitting portal there. We're also, again, I mentioned the website, we've been working with Pam Spencer, of course, to have a page dedicated to the program and all of its information on our city website, as well as working on all the communication materials. There's a few requirements of us from the National Park Service to have a few disclaimers and some information to, to, you know, tie this back to the National Park Service and kind of give them their credit, so we're working to have all of that included going forward. But this is really exciting to have that kind of big approval from the NPS, the ones, people that went through all of our materials, and frankly, as I said in the beginning, it's all good news. So they had a few little tweaks for us, but we've went through and made those changes, and they say it's good to go. So we're recommending to open this here in May.
Wow, thank you.
So you all emailed the grant guidelines to all of us. I assume the Commissioners have all taken a look at those guidelines. Do you want to kind of just give a quick overview of what those guidelines are again for, for our purposes and for those in the audience who might be watching it?
Sure. I touched on the eligibility and what's required there. Again, the program areas are the Downtown Historic District, the Market House Historic District, and the South Side. Since the South Side is not a district, then that would be evaluated on the individual property if they are on the National Historic Register or if they are eligible for the register. All of the sub-awards will have to comply with the Secretary of the Interior standards for historical renovation in order to maintain those structural guidelines. Our goal with this funding, we're hoping to award six to seven awards, up to $100,000 each, is stabilization and structural integrity. We have a whole list of different things that they, that this funding can be used for that'll be included in the application, along with what else is not included. So I think when we get it all out on the website and have that information available, we'll also be able, you know, to take questions related to that information as.
So people could apply for a grant in any amount up to $100,000, is?
That is correct.
Okay.
They could, yes.
I thought it's $250,000 each. Six or seven, 250?
The total grant was 750. It was up to $100,000 for the sub-awards.
Okay.
And then we kept, we've set aside $100,000 for technical assistance.
Okay.
For environmental and historic preservation requirements.
For assistance to being on the National Register, is one of those examples.
And, and one of the things I'd just say to the other Commissioners is if you know people who might be prospects for this, above all things, get them to come to a meeting, because we can, we can assist them in giving, you know, them advice on how to write, you know, their grant and all the compliance things. You know, you and I had a conversation about a different situation, but, but just giving, you know, giving advice to give them the best chance, you know, of putting their best foot forward, you know, to try to apply for this grant.
And this, and, and I'll reiterate what Palmer said, that this isn't a simple grant. You know, there's, there's a lot to, a lot of, like you said, a lot of regulations and requirements that come with this federal funding, so it's going to be really important for the applicants to understand that.
Yeah.
As they go through this process and understand really what they're getting into, which, you know, a lot of them may already if they're in a historic building, but we just want to make sure all of our applicants go into this with the understanding that this, this has a lot of technicalities to it.
And one of the, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the, the guidelines is, or one of the things that we will evaluate is matching. Am I correct there?
That is correct.
And so, you know, somebody could match 10% or match 50%, and, you know, one of the things that we, we want to do is make those dollars go as far as they possibly can. So someone who comes, who has some amount of cash, you know, to contribute to the project, I mean, that's a good, that's a good thing.
Yes, and we actually have that rated into the points that you can get, and it's on a scale. The minimum that you, that is required for the grant is a 10% cash, dollar-for-dollar match. Now, if they go up to 15%, 20%, they get additional points for their application with, because we understand that even at $100,000, that's not going to, you know, take care of everything for one of these historical buildings. So we, we do want to leverage other dollars, other financial sources to help build upon this, you know, this is to get it going, this is to help give business owners, building owners a boost, but also bringing in, leveraging other funds to help support that.
Any questions from anyone? Well, I think it's exciting. You know, it's an opportunity for us to leverage this $750,000, you know, and try to leverage across, you know, as many historical buildings as possible, and it really fits in with our South Side initiative as well, so great work. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, city clerk, please call roll.
Commissioner Henderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Mayor Bray.
Aye.
Okay, I'll ask the city clerk to read the next municipal order.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Accepting Approving 90% Design and Authorization, Authorizing PFGW to Proceed with Construction Documents for the Entry Plaza for the Paducah Sports Park," and authorizing the mayor to execute any necessary documents.
So moved. Second.
Jeff, welcome.
Good evening. Good to be back with you. I think we've got a PowerPoint presentation to, okay. Excuse me. Tis the season. So this is a presentation, a brief overview of the, some of the work that's been going on with the sports park over the last couple of months, a brief update there, and then we'll get into, toward the end of the presentation, an overview of what you will be approving tonight, hopefully, which will be the 90% construction documents for the entry plaza redesign. So just real quick, Paducah Sports Park, work that's currently going on, site work and utility work continues. If you've been on the Greenway Trail behind Stuart Nelson Park or through Stuart Nelson Park, you've seen a lot of activity going on, and so there's a lot of things that started out, you couldn't tell the difference, now you're starting to see foul poles, fencing, backstop poles, curb around the fields, and all that. So it's really starting to take shape. Buildings are starting to come up out of the ground. Building four, which is a concession stand at Stuart Nelson Park, they were about at seven or eight feet of wall height today when I was there, so that's, and they were at zero feet last Thursday, so it's, it's progressing quickly. And so some of this information is even outdated from, from when it was prepared last week. Field subgrade is going on, on all the fields, on, on field six through 10 on the Stuart Nelson Park side of the, of the facility. Retaining wall construction continues behind field 10, between field 10 and the Greenway Trail. That work is ongoing. There has been, Stuart Nelson Park Road began to deteriorate a little bit with, with the hauling in of rock for the fields, for the subgrade of the fields. That happened about two weeks ago. We started noticing some deterioration. Caught it quickly. We halted work for, until a solution could be found, or halted the hauling of gravel in until a solution could be found. We have since laid down 1,800 lineal feet of essentially high-density rubber mats, composite matting on the road, which has certainly helped, but we're starting to see some, some, some of that deterioration translate through, some of that we noticed today, and so we're, we're working on trying to mitigate that in the days ahead and how, what a good solution will be, and I just got a call on that late this afternoon. So, but we're, you know, working with the residents, keeping businesses, access to businesses, access to the residents, the Greens there at the end of the road and, and working with them, and Ms. Green has my cell phone number, and, and she used it today, so. And I'm happy for her to have that, so. So Stuart Nelson Property, or Stuart Nelson Park Road Property Owner Meeting was held on April 29th to discuss timing of the, the construction of the road, the rehabilitation and reconstruction of that road. Had a great turnout. I think most of the, the property owners and even some of the tenants of those, that leased from those property owners were present. Good dialogue, and everybody seemed really pleased with the, the work that will be done, and just trying to coordinate schedules and how that happens. how that happens and keep, keep those folks up to date on, on timing and lease disruption to their properties as possible. Signage plans are being developed for the facility. This includes anything from the main property, or the main Paducah Sports Park signage, anything to restroom sign, or restroom door signs. So we're working on a schedule now to develop all of that. And those meetings have been occurring about every two weeks. And then we do have a Stuart Nelson Park Memorial Committee meetings about, try to do those once a week. Schedules sometimes push those to once every two or three weeks. But we're trying to meet with those, some local community members with particular Paducah Historical Preservation Group about what, what story needs to be told at the memorial site. And so we're working on that because that is a significant part of the, of the project and a significant part of the park that we want to celebrate. So these are some recent renderings that we had completed by Hitchcock Design Group, our landscape architecture partner. This shows field layouts with diamond configurations. As you remember, all of the fields are multipurpose, so they can accommodate baseball, softball, soccer, football, any rectangular field sport that you can imagine could be played on these fields, and then diamond fields for, for baseball, softball can be as well. And this just shows the diamond field configuration. And then the next image shows soccer fields. The ones in Stuart Nelson Park there on the left of the image are, are full-size soccer fields. So that would be the, the largest soccer fields that you would play on. You think MLS-sized soccer fields, probably larger than, than any soccer field we have in this community. Maybe McCracken or Tillman now with their, their new fields can, can accommodate that. And then you see some smaller fields laid on top of the, the diamond fields, the quads there, but then another full-size soccer field on the championship field at the far right of the image. So just providing maximum flexibility for, for tournaments, for, for playability on the, on the complex fields. And then you see the parking and landscaping layered in as well. Any questions? And feel free to stop me at any point. I don't want to get too far along, you forget your question or...
What, the, the?
Yes, sir.
The map, like the orientation, where is, like, what are we looking at?
Yeah, yeah. So it, I know, it feels a little, little disconcerting. So, so this, this is Stuart Nelson Park Road here.
Okay.
Coming in. This is the Greens' house. This is the businesses along Stuart Nelson Park Road. You see, it used to be Greenway Village here to the, to the bottom left. This is, I'm trying to get my bearings now. This is Metcalf Lane here. So the car wash is right up here at United Rentals. And then this is Downs Drive at 32nd Street, the traffic light at 32nd Street. So this is kind of the backside of Watermark Honda. And then the Greenway Trail runs along the north side of the property there. You can kind of catch a glimpse of it right there. But, but all the trails that you see on this rendering are with inside the park, and then we have some additional connections to the Greenway Trail. So, thank you.
Jeff, can you tell us about the memorial committee? How did, I mean, not so much how did it come about, but who's on the memorial committee and who's giving direction to all of that?
Yeah. So, so we, we reached out and, and the dialogue started several years ago with some, some public meetings we had at the W.C. Young Community Center, just sharing the master plan, sharing what, what our design team thoughts were on, on how we celebrate Dr. Nelson, how we celebrate the park's history. And so Paducah, around that same time, Paducah Historical Preservation Group formed, which, which is a nonprofit organization that, that promotes the, the, the celebration and rehabilitation of predominantly African-American historical sites in the region. And so we're working with Rhonda Smith and Jevanta Dawson. They're our two primary contacts. Rosa Scott has been involved as well, but, but those are our two primary contacts, and we've been meeting with them. Herb Martin has been brought into the mix, and he was taught drafting at, at the Technical School over on H.C. Mathis, and then when it moved over to, to Blandville Road. So we, we're, there will be some opportunities in the future, probably for some, for some additional dialogue outside of that or sharing of information, but that we wanted to keep that group. Not purposely small, but we wanted it to, we didn't want to get too many, too many cooks in the kitchen.
And all I was looking at is, will there be, and you answered that, will there be some dialogue outside of the Paducah Historical Preservation Committee?
Yeah, and we're still trying to figure out what that looks like.
Yeah, I think that's, that's important, and I think we should probably give you some input on that. I mean, as you think, as you think about it, I think, I think that's really important. So.
Yeah. And we're, and the group also meets, it's Amy from the city, it's Steve Irvin from the county, and so it's not just the design team. There's city, county representation on that Sports Tourism Commission Chair.
Great.
Meets as well. So, so yeah. Okay. So these images are a couple of weeks old, maybe almost a month old at this point. This is the Bluegrass Downs side of the park, looking from the north towards Park Avenue. You kind of see the outline of what used to be the racing track coming around toward the top there. So just some, some rough site grading is going on, excavation for the, for the stormwater ponds is going on at this point, and, and draining the pond that was there because it's where the championship field will need to be. And then this is an image looking due west from Bluegrass Downs side of the park toward Stuart Nelson Park. You see fields six, seven, eight, and nine, and 10, all under construction here. 10, field 10 is the one that's kind of angled off to the side here, and then fields six through nine are the ones going due west. And just as a reminder, the six, six and seven and eight and nine are 500 feet square. They're massive. And we did that for some cost savings, and that just gives us maximum flexibility in how we use those fields. And, and so just kind of get the scale of, of those fields. And then the, the area here in the front is roughly where the parking will be, and then just south of the image here is where the Stuart Nelson Memorial is planned, kind of in that area. So, and that's roughly, the, the area to the south here is roughly where the dog parks were, that's just off the image here, just for some context. This just shows the installation of some of the backstop net poles. This won't be your typical chain-linked fence backstop. This will be some, some, I think, four poles per backstop with netting for, for maximum visibility to, to the games. We saw that in several locations. We toured and, and liked it. So that's what we're doing there. Dugouts, this was a couple of weeks ago, dugout foundations, I think, have all been poured, slabs have all been poured at this point. And then what you see on the right side of the image there is gravel, DGA, dense gray aggregate being placed for the subgrade for all the fields. And there's drainage pipe underneath all that, and so the fields will be drained underground out to the stormwater and for, again, maximum playability. Again, just some, these are, this is field six looking towards eight and nine. And this is the field six through nine, just some, some of the backstop fencing and the backstop poles here at the back of the, at the field. So just right behind home plate. This is the, the foundations for the concession building that were, that were being construct, that's being constructed now. And as I said, there's probably six or seven feet of wall heights already, just within the last few days. So this is, again, part of the rendering, the updated renderings we have. This is the, the quad diamond fields looking toward the east, looking toward Kroger, if you would. So this is, you see the championship field just on the very top edge of the screen, and then the four diamond fields displaying a baseball layout, and then the concession building there in the middle with shade structures around the dugouts and, and all that. So it's just, it gives you a nice view of what this is going to look like and, in the, in the next year or two. And not to say that construction's going to take another two years. I don't...
Well, I was just going to say, January 2026 is...
Planted a seed there that I didn't need to plant. Yeah, construction is still anticipated to be complete at the end of this year, very early in 2026, with, with tournament play starting in the spring. But just some of the landscaping will take some time to develop is, is what I meant. So, so this is the multipurpose fields looking toward the southwest from the, the concession building. So this would maybe be where the playground used to be in Stuart Nelson Park, looking back towards Greenway Village. And so you just see the sheer size of those fields, shade structures, site amenities, benches, vendor tent locations, and, and just ample landscaping and for, and places for people to gather. So, so this, this is getting a little more into, to the, the real reason I'm here tonight is to give you an update on the 90% construction documents for the redesign of the entry plaza. If you remember, the grandstand was, was removed from the site last year, and, and so we've been working on a design concept, really starting in probably July or August of 2024, to rethink this space without the grandstand, and how do we create an entrance that's inviting, that's welcoming, and, and unique in this park. And so what you see here in the image is a rendering of that. You see the entry plaza coming in off the parking lot. I'm going to fast forward one slide and give you some, provide a little context for that image. So you see here, this is Downs Drive coming in here. The traffic light is right out here. This is the, the primary parking on this end of the site as you enter the site. And so you start to see this, this connection here, and this area here is what I'm going to be talking about in this previous rendering. So this is, as you come across from the, the parking lot, you, you enter this, this landscaped plaza. Your encounter with this decorative ornamental gate here that, that's, that's not chain-linked, it's a, an aluminum decorative fencing and gates that will be opening up to this entry plaza pavilion. It's an open-air structure, much like we'd see in, in any park. No walls, but underneath this structure, we have restroom facilities and, and an office and mechanical and utility room that, that all of the site utilities for this entire complex enter in here and enter into that room and then are distributed throughout the site. And a lot of that's just, that's what we had in the grandstand. So instead of rethinking how we distribute the utilities and redoing that work, we just created a space in this plan for that to happen, saving money in the process. Once you enter through and go through this entry plaza pavilion, you enter into this, this, this additional landscaped plaza that, that has this, these two six-foot-tall earthen berms that are covered in grass that are mowable, but it provides seating opportunities for the championship field. This was an idea that, that came about, I think, in August and of 2024, and I remember whose idea it was, and she's in this room, sitting six feet behind me. So it just, it worked out very, very well. It, it provides a neat place for, for folks to watch a game, you know, on their blankets, you know, take the blanket out there, lay it out on the berm, watch the game. Provides a unique landscape structure there and just a, kind of a different visual than what you would expect walking in with just flat sidewalks, because the, the site is very flat. And so providing just a little bit of height, but not obstructing the view so much that you can't see on beyond it when you come in. Remember, they're just six feet tall. And then other vendor tent areas, retail shop, additional seating areas, they're adjacent to the championship field. And again, that's that site plan you see with the championship field there. And then we've got some, some enlargements here that I'll go through. And so you see this, this landscaped area coming across from the parking lot, going across the, the drive there, and entering in, and just kind of see how that begins to flow in a site plan. The, this is an enlargement here of the, the vendor area, these squares that you see, the three along the side, the six, grouping of six there are just the, the pop-up vendor tents that can be set up. They'll have electrical outlets nearby so that vendors can, can plug in things as needed. The rectangle that's running north-south here is a food trailer that's been, that's, I don't think has been ordered yet, but that's, Sports Facilities Companies is, is working on that. We're providing water, power to that location, so a food trailer can be placed there, providing some additional concession opportunities on the site. And then the, the large square is just a shade structure that was accounted for in the, in the, in the original bid. It's about 30 feet square with picnic tables and, and all of that underneath there. And again, this is just showing the landscaping that'll be in the parking lots, in the, the area leading up to the entry pavilion, and then on into the, to the complex itself. So we're, we're really not, you know, we've got unit prices from the, the current contract work that has been approved for, for landscaping. And so all of this landscaping was, was placed in accordance with those unit prices. And so we were able to, to get a lot more landscaping in than, than what we, than what we hoped for. So this is
Excellent.
Going to be an excellent place. And we've even got shade trees on the backside, on the southwest side and the south side of the berm. So as you're sitting there in the afternoon, late afternoon, early evening in the summer, you've got shade covering you. That might take a couple of years. We're not planting 40-foot-tall trees, but, but eventually shade will be there.
What kind of trees are you planting?
I'm not sure what those are. I'll, I'll have to check. But they're, they're all, no hackberries. So...
That's good, but all canopy trees.
Yeah, they're all, all shade trees, canopy trees, and then trees that are appropriate, not only to this region, in this area, but also approved by our zoning ordinance. So... And some of these are, feel a little repetitive. This is just a precedent image of, of the, the open-air structure that we're calling for. This is just, it's a very simple structure. It will have a wood ceiling underneath to give it a little more warmth and inviting space there. We'll have some decorative brick bases around it that tie back into the brick that's on the concession buildings. And then the roof color will probably be regal blue, which is matching all the dugout color roofs around the complex and trying to just tie everything together. Floor plan of the entry pavilion, as you see, the, the restrooms on the left here. We've got four toilets for the women, two sinks, two urinals, two toilets, and two sinks for the men, baby changing stations in each one, and janitor's closet. And then on the right side of the floor plan, you see a tournament director's office with a couple of storage closets, and then the mechanical and electrical room there on the plan south. So just trying to keep the structure very simple. We, we wanted to provide some amenities here with restrooms and a tournament director's office, but we just, we really anticipate this being the place where most folks funnel through, you know, meet up with their teams, families, and then they proceed on through the complex to their destination for the day. These are just some, some construction details we had in the, in the 90, having the 90% set, just showing some wall sections, building sections about how those two structures that, that will sit underneath the open-air pavilion will sit there independently of the open-air pavilion. And then the exterior elevation of that building, we're, we're bringing in the, the brick. We're trying to keep in all the material selections and colors we've made thus far, will be keep, in keeping with those selections here with the, the same brick and all of that. So trying to just make sure everything is tied together for a cohesive look throughout the complex. And I believe that is the last slide. Are there any questions?
I'll make a comment. And this is just, all the buildings going to have the same blue top?
All of the, all of the dugouts, all the open-air pavilion here, the, I don't know that we've seen submittals yet on the shade structures or the picnic pavilions, but we're, so those may not have been selected.
Yeah, my only comment is that it may be good to identify, it can be such a big area saying, hey, it's the blue one or the green one, or whatever versus...
Yeah, and I think we're, we're going to, we're working, that's part of our signage package now, is working on field identification and how that wayfinding
Yeah.
Will be, will occur. And so, but yes.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Good point.
Questions down here?
I just had a similar idea, but Buzz, you, you get it.
Beat you to it.
It's funny, I was sitting here thinking, oh, that looks so nice.
It's funny, I was sitting here thinking, oh, it looks nice for them all to be the same color.
But I was just thinking that identification thing, because it's gonna be a big part.
Yeah, and we're, you know, we're trying to figure out, you know, just how the wayfinding works. And because we want people to get to where they need to go easily. That's part of the experience. If you come in and you can't find where you need to go and you're frustrated, as a parent who doesn't get frustrated at all, you know, that just, it takes some of the edge off and it makes it a good experience and then you want to come back, so.
And we've got a chance to name that berm, Amy Clark Berm, or?
Amy, you want to address that?
It looks great. Thank you.
Yeah, really. Thanks for being here, Jeff.
Thank y'all.
Okay, I'll ask the city clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, we have two ordinances to adopt tonight. And we both have heard previously about both of them. I'll ask the city clerk to read the first one.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Adopting an Incentive Program for City Officials to Obtain Training Related to City Government." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance establishes a training incentive program for elected officials of the city of Paducah in accordance with KRS 64.5278. Under the program, officials are required to complete 15 hours of approved training annually. Up to 10 unused training hours may be carried over to the following year. Elected officials who fulfill the annual training requirement will receive a $500 incentive for each year of completion. These payments may accumulate annually up to a maximum of $2,000. Additionally, the ordinance designates the Kentucky League of Cities as the administrator of the program.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
One comment I'd made about, would make about this ordinance is that I think that it would be helpful if the clerk or other people would help educate the commissioners on, you know, where the opportunities are to get this training, you know, to make sure that we're, you know, availing that opportunity. I think that would be helpful.
We can definitely put together an FAQ, you know, common questions.
Great, appreciate it. Okay, I'll ask the city clerk to read the next ordinance.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Amending Chapter 118 Vegetation of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Chapter 118 Vegetation of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah to modify the role of the appointee to assist with developing a tree planting and replacement plan for city-owned lots and rights of way and serve as the official staff support for the Tree Advisory Board. The amendment reduces the number of members on the Tree Advisory Board from nine to five members by removing the Parks Director, City Engineer, Planning Director, and Public Works Director as members of the board. The board is required to provide an annual report on its activities and goals to the City Commission. This amendment creates a tree voucher program for the purpose of enhancing the city's tree canopy. The amendment delegates authority to the Fire Prevention Division to cite and abate vegetation on private property that projects onto public ground through Chapter 42 of the Code of Ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments on this? All good. Call roll, please.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
All right, we're introducing two ordinances tonight. And I'll ask the city clerk to please read the first one.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute a Professional Services Contract with HDR Inc., Not to Exceed $185,000 for Alternatives Analysis for U.S. Army Corps of Engineers (USACE) Reevaluation of Permit LRL 2008 1267A." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract for professional services with HDR Inc. in the amount not to exceed $185,000 for alternatives analysis for USACE reevaluation of permit number LRL 2008 1267A. This expenditure shall be charged to the dredging account number DR 0047.
So moved.
Sub move.
Second.
So Greg, take us out of the fog here. I think we got a hint when I heard the word dredging.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager, City Clerk. As stated, this contract is for HDR to provide an alternatives analysis to the Army Corps of Engineers that they requested as part of their permit revaluation process associated with sedimentation from the transient boat dock and landmass situation. They, as part of the alternatives analysis, HDR uses hydraulic modeling, surveying, analysis to provide three different proposed alternatives, including a no-build alternative. The goal there is they put those alternatives in front of the Corps and said, to determine what is the least environmentally practicable, least environmentally damaging, practicable alternative, basically. What's the least damaging to the environment and allows all of the intended authorized uses to remain? So a lot to say, this is a lot of, allows them to do analysis and assess the situation to provide information to the Army Corps of Engineers.
So in layman's terms, we are, HDR, we're gonna pay HDR this $185,000?
Not to exceed, yes.
Not to exceed $185,000, thank you, with three alternatives? And would choose the one that's least invasive, or?
Yes, they do an analysis to provide at least three alternatives, and then including a no-build, which is no changes. They give those alternatives to the Corps. And through their process, they've identified this is the one we think fits the criteria the best, of least invasive, allows everything to function as intended. And that's what the Corps has asked to be provided.
So this is a design fee?
Yes, it's a, it's a design fee, essentially.
Yeah.
Basically, it's a reevaluation. The Corps comes in and says, you know, we have sedimentation that is occurring because of the transit boat dock, the landmass. We anticipate sedimentation. And then every so often, they go back and say, we need to evaluate how that sedimentation is building up and what issues or non-issues that occurs. And that's part of the reevaluation of our existing permit. And so they require us to go, this is maybe the third?
About the third or fourth study.
Right.
Yeah, that we've done.
For them, to continue to monitor to that occurrence.
And do we, we do the study every three, four years, or as needed?
As they request it.
Okay.
Because they're the ones that permit. Ultimately, they gave us the permit to build in their controlled navigable waters. And so they come back and evaluate to make sure that there's, you know, nothing that was unforeseen. Or if something was unforeseen, how do you address that?
So we expended basically $185,000 four times? Would this be the fourth time we've done that? I know for the cost of money, you know, it's probably less earlier years, but that's pretty much.
Yeah, and this is, you know, based on the contract of base, and there's HDR and Greg and the team in engineering and the Corps have been working to get this. Corps, tell us what you need, so we're not going in doing something, then you come back and say, we need something else. And so that's what we've got to a point that everybody agrees that the methods and methodology that's being used will satisfy what the Corps wants at this time.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Greg. All right, I would ask the city clerk to please read the second ordinance that we're introducing tonight.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Repealing Chapter 2, Division 15, Main Street Department and Board of Directors of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance repeals Chapter 2, Division 15, Main Street Department and Board of Directors of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. So moved.
Second.
Basically, this is the first step in returning Main Street to a nonprofit. This will repeal the existing ordinance. This is what you're introducing tonight. It will repeal the existing ordinance. And then two weeks from now, you will vote on that. And we will also bring a contract for service for your review at that time. If you have any early questions, David Wilkins is in the audience. He has emerged as a fearless leader of Main Street so far with the downtown merchants. But we're going to have a meeting with him on Thursday morning and give them an update as well. That's where we are today.
No questions from my end?
Sounds great.
It's just, you know, it's just a step towards what we set out to do, so.
It is.
Sorry, we don't have any questions, David, but thanks for being here. So from there, from next?
Yeah, I'm just hanging out here.
The next item is, we have a couple of items to discuss. And the first one is South Side, and Carol's gonna give us an update on South Side.
We have a timeline here, and I asked Palmer to come up and pass out to you all what the legal requirements are. This is an updated timeline. And we will be getting the draft to you very soon.
Thank you.
In the next probably 48 hours.
In the next, how long?
Probably 48 hours. As soon as I say tomorrow, there'll be some, we've got a few little formatting changes. I would like to tell you that, but it will be very soon. It will be a draft. We are looking for your comments, we're looking for your feedback. That, it is a full plan, it's fleshed out. But we're looking for the things that you like, that you don't like, and how we can massage it. Because we can amend it once it's adopted, but we would like to get it as close to what you want in its initial form. What we've handed out is so that you know, legal requires certain things to be met by statute, Kentucky revised statute. There are certain requirements that have to be met. It has to establish the case for blight. There are lots of things that, so they know we're doing it correctly, doing it right, not taking advantage or doing things that we shouldn't be doing. And this kind of lays the groundwork out for it. So you'll see these things highlighted.
How big is this plan?
It's about 65 pages or so, 65 to 70. We do have a lot of data in it. It's got a lot of graphs, it's got a budget. And we put our benchmarks low. Our hope is, you'll see five houses a year, new construction, that's kind of our target. That's what we would say is a success over five years. That's 25 new homes in a targeted area. We feel pretty certain we're going to be substantially above that. But we wanted to be able to define success. We don't want to come out of the gate, set it too high, and then not be able to meet our benchmarks and acquire what we need to do. But we have to have a public hearing. We have to send the notices out to every property owner, every property owner in the area. So in phase one, there's 1,061 parcels, and we have to send by notice, a mail, mailed card, telling them when the public hearing is going to be. And it has to be at least 10 days prior to the hearing. So that will be sent out, those will be sent out. And we'll upload the plan at that point in draft form, so we can get feedback from the stakeholders in the community. We'll upload it to the city website. And then the Planning Commission on Monday, June the 9th, will hold the public hearing and hear the first feedback. And they'll have the plan as well to make their comments. And this will work just like most things. They'll recommend the plan up to you, but they're going to read it, have their thoughts, have their input. So it will be fleshed through a couple of bodies as we work through the process. And then we have a meeting on Monday, the 7th, for the adoption of the plan, if that's what they see fit. And then it will come back to you for the first reading at the City Commission on Tuesday, July 22nd. We've left, you know, time in there, because we expect changes to come along the way. So we've left a little time to massage.
How seriously will those who don't own property but rent, how seriously will their comments or thoughts be taken? Or are they even allowed to?
No, absolutely, absolutely. They're part of the neighborhood, they're part of the fabric. And we value their input and want to hear what they're saying. I think what you'll be pleasantly surprised about is, you know, we've talked through code enforcement about having someone that deals strictly with rental property. We talk about that in the plan. Because oftentimes, people that are renting really don't have much control over.
And that's my point, absolutely.
I have one thing to add.
Oh, sorry.
One thing, a bit quiet. One thing you all mentioned the last time we were here, about a month ago, was how to incorporate the voices of those rental residents. And so while we did mention we are sending those mailers out to every property owner, we're also taking that extra step to still send to that current tenant as well, so we're not missing them. So it's a very large Excel sheet of every address of every person, and then some. So we're absolutely incorporating that, so.
That is true. Not, the property owner isn't always necessarily at the address of the property that they own. So we doubled, cross-checked if we're good.
Good deal, I appreciate that.
Sure, sure. Any other questions, comments?
Just one I had, I didn't really ask it last time, but with the new homes that we're planning on building, what is the estimated square feet that we're going for on those homes?
One of the things we're working through right now is the majority of the lots on the South Side are 40 feet across or smaller. So it's a little smaller footprint than what we have seen in the two neighborhoods for revitalization prior to that. So we're working to get some plans that will help accommodate those, I hate to say setbacks, but it's a smaller lot. And I would say, on average, unless it's a two-story house, you're looking at 1,200 to 1,400 square feet.
I asked that question because the thought about affordability. I know that about 1,000 square feet is a very affordable home, but I didn't know if we were able to target those developers that specialize maybe in smaller homes to make that affordability a little better. Because I know last time we had the meeting, the talks were about like the loan, the gap funding and whatnot for like home loans, 250,000 or whatnot. But, and I'm just bringing this up now because I've had a lot of people ask me about it, because we're needing affordable homes, not large-scale homes. So I'm just seeing if we're taking an initiative to try to find those smaller.
I know of one developer who owns about six vacant parcels right now and has already constructed one home that's about 1,000 square feet. I think that you're going to see old ranges, you know. And we've had people that have talked about cottage homes. There's lots of, there's lots of opportunity. There's over 400 vacant properties in that first phase. And so I think there's lots of opportunity, and people will, I've learned, working with developers, they're gonna build what people will buy.
Right. Is anyone talking about building duplexes, for instance, that kind of?
We have had a couple that have talked about building duplexes. The issue there is finding multiple lots together where they can remove or abolish that lot line and get it situated to have everything.
So one of those small lots is probably too small for a duplex?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments?
No, it looks.
Excited, I'm excited, yes, for sure.
It's been a long time coming, but.
See that, get a copy of that. I know we've had it, I'm going to have to go back and look at it. Is it online, or?
This?
Yeah.
The timeline.
I can send it to you, I can email it to you.
You probably have.
Send it out to all of us.
But I'll send it out to all of you, it's been adjusted, so.
Okay, that'd be great.
That's fine, I'll be glad to email it to you.
Appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you.
Very much so.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And the last item that we have on the agenda is a discussion item. Hope's going to come up here and tell us about Paducah becoming a CDBG-entitled community and what that means for us.
Yes, good evening. So it's kind of fun to get up here and talk about some of these projects that we've got going on and how they're going to improve the city. So the Community Development Block Grant Entitlement Program. So historically, over the past years, going back since this program started, there have been cities across Kentucky that are designated as entitlement cities, and they get funding directly from the Housing and Urban Development, HUD funding, directly to them through the federal government. The rest of the communities in Kentucky, our funding comes through the state. It is subawarded through the state. HUD gives the money to the state, and then the state awards the money to local communities. We are becoming an entitlement community, which means we will no longer have to apply for these individual grants at the state level. We will be one of the communities that receives direct allocated funding from HUD to our community. So this is new to us. There are a lot of steps that we have to go through and things we need to do in order to become an entitlement community, and that's part of what I'm going to talk about tonight. But just to tell you a little bit about the program, it provides annual grants on a formula basis to entitled cities and counties to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment, by expanding economic opportunities principally for low and moderate income persons. And that's a really important point about CDBG, is that the funding is used to benefit those communities, the low and moderate income persons. We would be charged with carrying out a wide range of community development activities directed at revitalizing neighborhoods, economic development, and providing improved community facilities and services. So there are a number of things that these, this funding can be used for. First is acquisition of real property. It can be used for relocation and demolition of buildings. One of the things that CDBG requires is if you are going to demolish something and rebuild something, that you have to provide housing for those individuals during the interim. Rehabilitation of residential and non-residential structures, construction of public facilities and improvements such as water and sewer facilities, streets, neighborhood centers, basically anything that's going to support that residential environment and that home environment and making it better for the individuals that are living in that area. They can also be used for public services within certain limits, activities related to energy conservation and renewable energy resources, and also providing assistance to profit-motivated businesses to carry out economic development and job creation and retention activities. So right now, we have not been given an exact sum yet, but it is estimated that we will receive for the first year, $469,100, and that is contingent upon, of course, Congress allocating that funding. And we also, I'm going to talk about right now, we have to submit a plan for that and a budget. So I'm going to get, the next part that I'm going to talk about is our consolidated plan. It is required by the city in order to receive this funding. It is a five-year plan, and it is designed to help states and local jurisdictions to assess their affordable housing and community development needs and market conditions, and to make data-driven, place-based investment decisions. So what does that mean? For us, a consolidated plan is going to have four components to it that we must address. The first is a housing needs assessment, and things we're going to be looking at there is local housing data. We're going to be talking to local social service agencies and interviewing them and getting input. We are required to have at least two community meetings as part of this process to get input. We're looking at public housing data and also homelessness data. The second piece of it is a non-housing community development needs assessment. This is where we're going to be looking at local business activities, local economic development needs, our labor force, and also hazard mitigation is another area that is considered non-housing community development. The third component of this plan is a strategic plan. And again, this is a five-year plan that is to target a specific geographic area, is going to outline our priority needs, is going to look at market conditions, resources, and our anti-poverty strategy. This is where we will go in and really set our goals and objectives over the next five years, based on that information that we collect during the needs assessment process. So we're going to take all that data, we're going to compile it, we're going to put it together, we're going to take that community input, input from those local services agencies, and then we're going to come up with a five-year strategic plan to say, here are the issues we identified, here are the goals and objectives and the steps that we're going to take to meet these needs in our community and how we're going to use that funding. So the fourth piece of this is a one-year action plan, and we have to do that every year, whereas the consolidated plan, the overall big plan is every five years. This is on an annual basis, and this is where we take directly from that strategic plan and say, these are our priorities, this is what we're starting on, this is what we're going to do our first year. And that includes the goals and objectives for that first year, what projects we are going to be completing. Does it include public housing? That is another piece, and that needs assessment is working with the housing authority and collecting information on their housing capabilities, waitlist, issues that they're seeing as well. And then homelessness and special needs. They really want additional information, especially on, in some of the special needs populations like HIV, those that have different disabilities, those that have substance misuse issues, things like that. So they want to make sure that we're incorporating everybody into this plan as we're looking at our needs and moving forward. So this is our timeline. This is a very, very quick timeline that we are getting ready to do. May and June, we're going to be focused on data collection and completing interviews with those local agencies. We have to have the plan open for 30 days for public comment before it's adopted and we submit it to HUD. So during July, we are going to open that for the public comment period to get feedback from the community. Those two meetings with the community will also be incorporated. Early August, then, we will be ready to present the consolidated plan to you all for your all's approval. And then August 16th, that is our drop-dead date for getting this submitted to HUD. So that's a very brief overview.
It looks like there's a lot, the requirements are pretty robust. So we do all this work, spend the money, and then we submit it to HUD for review? I mean, if we don't get the grant, then we're out all that time and effort? Is that possible?
Well, the, so, the money is allocated to the community. Now, we have to, in order to get the funding, we have to submit the plan, but it's not really an application. Like, it's designating how we are going to send that funds. As long as, as long as it's, yes, as long as it's allocated, our plan is turned in on time, and there are no glaring issues with the plan.
Thank you.
Yeah, Commissioner, how this all started was, we hit a certain threshold in population in the region, and so HUD came to us and said, hey, you meet this criteria to become an entitlement community. And would you accept that? And earlier on, we said, yes, we would accept that. And then to process to then access the annual funding is you have to develop this plan on the front side. And so, as Hope mentioned, you know, it's not a, they came to us and said, you meet this criteria, so it's not that we wouldn't get the funding unless, you know, the feds don't do their job and allocate the funding, you know.
So we were previously, or I guess right now, we're getting this money through the state.
We're in a competitive application process. We don't have set amount, and so we can make an application, and we are competing against all the other small cities. There's only a handful of cities in Kentucky that meet the entitlement status to where we go directly through HUD instead of having to compete against everybody else in the state through DL, and go to DLG.
Have we been getting this similar pot of money through the state, though?
We, no, we have to make a competitive application, so no, we have not had guaranteed money. We have had CDBG grants that have been funded in the past for different things, but it is not an annual basis, and it's competitive.
Okay.
So he's asking a question, you know, we get this 400, whatever, you know, thousand, because I was in the initial meeting when they presented it. So, you know, you look at that over five years, and that, you know, that becomes a couple million dollars. So over the last five years, what kind of competitive, you know, grants, CDBG grants have we gotten? I mean, I know we had one that we were awarded for the senior center.
Well, yeah, I mean, we made an application, so that's a different, different pot.
That's a different pot.
Right, right.
We could still do those other applications.
No, no, once we go entitlement, no.
That's the point.
So, so once we go entitlement community, then those applications would have to go to, the fiscal court for local would have to be the applicant of record for them. They can still apply for those, but they would be in the same way for, but so, the same way as the recovery center that we, right. So it doesn't discount them for applying and getting that funds, they just have to go through fiscal court to do that, and it doesn't, it doesn't discount them from getting those funds, they just have to have a different agency do it.
The money could still come to the community, it's just that once we are an awardee, then it's got to go through the fiscal court rather than the city.
Because those applications are run through the small city and through DLG. That comes out of DLG, so the state gets a pot of money from HUD that they allocate into different areas and resources, and those, you know, those are competitive that they go up for. And so what we are getting by becoming entitlement is, we are getting a dedicated amount on an annual basis that we don't have to compete for.
We're just trying to establish if it's a net-net win. You know, I mean, I think that's really what we're...
Yeah, so each year, so in the past, let's say that we would apply for, you know, a grant for engineering to do roadwork, or an LMI, some type of LMI activity, and say that we got awarded that. It may be three or four years before we close out that grant, and we're not eligible to apply again. By entitlement community, we get those set funds coming in every year, and it's not just because we have one grant open, we can't apply for something else. It's going to be, it's going to be a regular amount coming in, so it would be a net some gain over a period of time.
These are all related, I'm sorry, to housing, right? Housing and economic development and infrastructure.
And housing is, you know, a huge issue for us.
Right.
And one of the commission priorities, so this is, this is, this is a positive thing, I think.
Yep, and we still have to meet those. The same thing is, it still has to go to meet those federal guidelines that we have to meet, making a competitive application as well to benefit low to moderate income.
I had a question about the 30-day period for public comments.
Yes.
So would that involve a public meeting or just?
Yes, so we're required to have two public hearings. One, right now, we're planning to do right before we open up the 30-day comment period. Then they have, you know, the community has 30 days to give feedback, information pertaining to the plan. And then toward the end of the 30-day period, we will have a second meeting. So we're required to do both, have both, two community meetings, and then also have it open for 30 days for public comment and feedback.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas, you were going to ask?
No, I was going to say, so if we, with the housing part, so we would request for the money, but what will we be able to do for housing? Like, we don't build houses, so.
Right, so it depends on how it ends up structuring, but you could use that in to incentives and other things for, but it still has to be, the ultimate recipient would have to go to low to moderate income or a certain percentage of it. It still has to benefit that. That is the federal guideline for the CDBG program.
But that money isn't going to HUD, that's money that comes to the city.
That's money that HUD is giving directly, that amount is HUD is giving us directly, that's why we'll call it an entitlement.
Got you.
Instead of, yeah, instead of us having to compete against other cities in the state, we get a direct entitlement from HUD.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, just keep us, you know, informed of how we're going along this timeline and see how we can contribute to the success of the public comments as we go along.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hope.
Okay, comments, city manager?
None, the city mayor.
Any comments? Commissioners, any comments?
I just had one brief comment. Mayor and Commissioner Henderson, y'all were present at the luncheon, the Fair Housing Luncheon, and I believe we received some great information at that luncheon about the statistics on homelessness and some of the other things that are affecting our community when it comes to housing. So I just wanted to bring it up to the commission, possibly, since we opened up that grant for homeless services, maybe having a presentation for the community to get an understanding of how homelessness is, or how, you know, how we can, or the statistics on homelessness in our community, like, I got some info right here, like 15% of what Kraken County lives in poverty, and 21% of the city of Paducah lives in poverty, and 11% of what Kraken County is food insecure. So I think that would be something that maybe we should present to the community so they can get an understanding, especially seeing that we're putting money towards this. There may be some people in the community that are, you know, not so supportive of helping homeless people, so I want to, you know, just make sure that they're educated and well-aware of why we're doing what we're doing and, you know, the impact that it's making in our community. And just want to throw something out there. Lacey Bowlen, she did a fantastic job presenting that to us at the Fair Housing Luncheon, so maybe get her to come down and present that for the community.
So I have no issue with that. You know, I think the deadline for the, you know, the grant applications is the 1st of June, so, right? Is that, is that right? So, yeah, I mean, we could, we could figure out a timing to do that. Any other comments from commissioners?
No.
Everybody's good? All right. We will have an executive session tonight. We will not take any action coming out. And I would ask the city clerk to please read the motion.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics: future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate as permitted by KRS 61.810 subsection 1 subsection B. Proposed or pending litigation as permitted by KRS 61.810 subsection 1 subsection C.
So moved.
Second. Call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.